Oh, here he comes.
I go to 6:30, I was supposed to be here.
I was calling you.
Going to 6:30?
Yes.
Where's your letter? Where's your paperwork?
Are we back on the record?
Yes.
What did it say on your?
Yes, Mr. Blessinger just walked in.
I'm sorry. What did it say on your?
So, just, Mr. Blessinger, the village attorney's office has already had it held its hearing. As you know, the hearing started at 5:30 and we've preserved the right to proceed without you. So, at this point, we've presented our case and will now allow you to respond.
Good evening, members of the board. I do apologize, I don't have the letter in front of me. I thought the game started at 6:30.
Your name?
My name is Lawrence Blessinger Jr.
State your address as well.
845 Hempstead Turnpike, Franklin Square, New York, 11010.
Are you going to testify on behalf right now?
Ah, yes, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do. Again, I do apologize. If I...I apologize. I got a phone call back in December of 2017 from a village official stating that I had a bunch of outstanding tickets. And I was asked if I could come down to village hall to try to rectify the situation. Came down to village hall, had a meeting with the former village attorney, Ms. Deborah Del Salvo, who I believe is no longer with the village. I was told to be in contact with her to try to rectify the situation. I sent her several emails, which I have some copies of with me, after the meeting, stating what is the next step. She needed the list of all my corporations, which I did give her. And I never heard back from her. I left her several voicemails. I even showed up here in village hall trying to rectify the situation. Then, I got no response from her. Again, I followed up in March of 2018. And she was on vacation. I came back at the end of March of 2018. Even showed up in front of our office outside here. Would not entertain me at all. Then I found out probably the 15th or the 20th of February that she retired. I came down here with my attorney, even before I got the subpoena to show up here in regards to my taxi licenses. I've probably spent over 40 hours myself personally in village hall getting this rectified. I've paid roughly north of $6,000 already in regards to the parking tickets. I believe we have a settlement of about roughly $10,500. I've been in this village for over 15 years. I've never had any issues. I do drunk driving programs during the holiday season. I take the seniors and the disabled to the voting polls in November so they can vote. I do apologize. Business has drastically changed over the past four or five years. You have Uber, you have Lyft. And in the village of Hempstead, a bigger factor is even all the illegal gypsies that are running around this village. There is more illegal taxis running around than there are taxis that have medallions within the village of Hempstead.
Aren't you technically an illegal taxi right now?
I guess you could say that. Okay. Excuse me?
How many taxis do you?
I have 41 medallions.
How many taxis was the question?
How many cars?
Through all my different various companies?
Mm-hmm.
About 300.
No, I mean here in Hempstead.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. And they're all expired?
Excuse me?
Are they all expired?
Ah, yes, because I was not able, they would not take my business license until I had this all rectified. And this is what I'm trying to do. Business is not what it used to be.
I have a question. So, if someone called in Hempstead today, and they call your company and said, "I need you to pick me up on 100 Terrace", would you send or call 100 Terrace to pick that person up, yes or no?
Yes, I would, sir.
So, you're...so you're just blatantly just violating the rules?
Trustee, I'm trying to get this resolved.
No, no, but, so you're saying you're blatantly, so you're standing there, you're saying you're blatantly, if someone calls right now, you say you'll pick them up, so you're just blatantly disregarding the suspension. Blatantly.
I didn't honestly know my licenses were suspended until I got this.
Okay, so now that you know that they're suspended, would you still, if somebody were to call right now and say, "Pick me up in front of 99 James J. Gone Away", or you want to send, or you want to dispatch somebody to pick that person up doing that it's suspended?
Yes, I have, trustee.
So, what are you asking us to do, to break the law?
No, you're...no, trustee. I came into the village, I spoke to the village justice.
Can I say, can I say this to you? Because as hempstead, we have a problem with people not following traffic laws. We have a problem with people hitting runs, things of that nature. We have a serious problem with that. We have even people that hit, run, hit people, kill people, and keep going. So, if you have someone driving knowing that they may get summonses, who would we feel comfortable if one of your drivers get into an accident and hit somebody, and then we're just going along with allowing you to just operate business as usual?
Trustee Johnson, I've been in the village for 15 years. I've never had an issue. Everybody knows who my cars are. They're the orange and white cars, okay? I've made every attempt I could to get every nickel and dime in here to pay these summonses over the past few weeks. I've personally came down here and paid summonses. I was here at a quarter of 40 a day paying summonses.
But I feel you're asking us to turn a blind eye and let you just continue operating.
I...
And that's why I feel like you're asking us to do it.
Trustee?
I'm not willing to do it. I don't know about the rest of the trustee, but I'm not willing to do it.
Trustee, I have tried...
Some type of decorum, some type of law and order has to take place in Hempstead.
I...trustee, I totally agree with you.
Don't consider one allowed, rock will sit him one allowed, what's hempstead one allowed? I don't know why you think hempstead is going to allow it.
Trustee, I have tried to get this resolved. I will show you emails that I sent to Ms. Del Salvo right now. She did not respond.
Well, she's no longer here.
Okay, and she, and she left here, I believe, sometime in January.
She's no longer here.
And I was in here right after I found out with my attorney, rectifying this, and then a week later, I was told to appear. Okay? And I committed every effort I could to clear this up. I apologize, it was a mishap, and I'm rectifying the situation.
Mr. Blessinger, you received the letter from the village December 22nd, 2017, in reference to your no business license. Are you aware of that? Do you happen to have that kind of experience?
No, I don't. 2001?
Sixteen.
I had a business license in 2016.
I'll show him. Are you referring to business licenses?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll show him the course of law. I'll give you a copy back in a moment here.
I think somebody signed it for it.
I had a business license in 2016. I had a business license in 2017.
I'll show you what's been marked. So, trying to respond what's been marked is Village Exhibit G. Showing that taxi Latino had a business license that expired at the end of October 31st, 2017. Does that refresh memory as far as how long he had a business license term?
It does not.
Okay. And I'm also showing you what Deputy Mayor Redford's referring to is Village Exhibit I, the letter, which is stating why we couldn't process your business license back in 2016 due to outstanding summonses with village court.
This is not refreshing my memory. All of my mail, I always get sent up to the corporate office just because we've had issues for several years getting the mail on Jackson Street.
And did you ever notify the village of that new, at that address?
Yes.
When did you notify them?
Several times over the years. I don't have the exact dates in front of me.
Do you have it in writing with you?
Not with me, no. It was, it was an honest mistake. I'm rectifying it. I'm not running anywhere. I've paid over $6,000 in less than a month. The village justice said I could pay 500 a week. This would be my second week, and I've already paid north of $6,000.
Larry, before you sent me here, I was fighting for you, and I'm going to fight for you in front of your face. I know it's tough out here. I know you have Uber, and I know you have all these companies out here fighting against you. I know you're not bringing in the money you used to bring in. You've been serving this community for many, many years. And I would like you to continue doing it. I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know you're a good man, and I know you do all sorts of favors for people in this community. And I know it's tough out there.
I like that comment, which I made two points earlier, I'll reiterate it. One was made by trustee Daniels. You referenced the illegal tabs in both Hempstead, and yet you are one of the illegal tabs. And trustee Johnson pointed out something, and I'll just add to it. On 10/18/18, a letter was sent to you to cease and desist, and you ignored it. These are two items that are difficult for me to overlook and be part of my consideration as to vote those forward.
Did we ever sit down and work out a payment plan? I know you came up here for Deborah a few times. I know that myself. I don't know whatever took place, but did we ever give you a payment plan?
I finally was able to get a payment plan done a few weeks ago after spending over 30 hours in village hall. And the associate justice gave me a payment plan to start paying $500 a week on March 13th, which I have now more than paid seven times that amount that was due. I tried on several occasions to get this figured out with Ms. Del Salvo, and to no avail. Would you like to see the emails I sent?
So, why, if he's been making his payments that we agreed to, why do we have to?
I apologize, there's no, there's nothing else I can send.
I'm just saying this, Mr. Blessinger. You have all of her emails, yet you have none outright response that we sent you.
The, the...
Even registered mail that somebody signed for.
I apologize, and I don't have the answer to that. The letters were sent to the Jackson Street office. It's been an issue for years getting mail there that we've been there. And that's why everything goes up to the corporate office.
Have you sent notice to the village about change of address for you?
Yes, and I've gotten mails from the village, even the renewal paperwork to do my taxi licenses have gotten sent to the corporate office.
You haven't been able to?
I do not have it on, no, I do not. I'm sure I can find something in the office.
I am relieved.
When you get the message, I will be just trying to get you to...
Oh, I apologize, yes, okay.
Yeah, I think it's that, I think it took him back. Do you think I have M? Yes, M's correct. I'll show it to the, I'll show it to, I'll show it to you personally, and I'll show it to him. This is a copy of the certified mail receipt for that letter was sent to the Franklin Mail Ed Franklin Square address. It was received back in November, this is the business letter.
Of course, when you bring in your present...
If he's been making payments, that's $500 a week, his licenses. If we agreed to do that, of course, that...
They only came in after we had our vote and scheduled the public meeting.
Excuse me, I came in before this letter was came out, before the meeting was here. I was in here with my attorney. We spent over six hours in here, and then I was told to come back the following week, and then the following week. I got the what?
We got, we got one person taking one horse at a time.
But he's signed agreeing with the village to pay $500 a week, and he's been doing it. Why are we here?
I find it's they wasn't $500 a week, it was a lump sum payment that was due.
You have a copy of it.
All the plead sheets. It's like a whole folder.
I just wanted to see what my...
Do you have anything in writing there, it's $500 a week, because we don't?
His license suspended. If we agreed to give him this payment plan, why would we punish him?
Judge Alvarado said on the record to make $500 a week payments starting March 13th, I believe was the date. I've made my payments and then some. It was never agreed upon to do a lump payment, because I even said, and I said it to the deputy village attorney, I couldn't afford to make the lump sum payment. And Judge Alvarado agreed to the $500 a week payment.
And that's what I was saying, was that what?
Trustee Daniels, Deputy Mayor Redford, we just clarify. Village Court and Legal Department are two separate entities. We make our recommendations, we draft the plea sheet. Mr. Blessinger came in with his attorney sometime at the end of February and tried to clarify his parking ticket. I'm not sure what the, um, the issue was earlier when the former village attorney was here, why Mr. Blessinger felt I'm going to go to the village attorney and ask for some type of legal assistance. The village attorney does not get involved in the plea of the village court. That is done by our prosecutors. So, for the last two years, or three years, however long this goes back, why Mr. Blessinger was going around the normal procedure, which is to come in. When you get to parking tickets, you have two sessions of parking trials. The first, and the, I believe, third Tuesday of every month, you can address a parking ticket here in the village. Mr. Blessinger has not appeared. This year, with all the changes happening, I don't know what exactly inspired him to want to address all these issues now, but he did come in a couple of, maybe three weeks ago, wanting to address over $15,932 in parking tickets. Again, all of these tickets have to be pulled. Our village clerk's office had to find tickets that are four, five, six years old, tagged to different license plates, tagged to different medallions. This was a long, arduous process to gather all this information. It took some time. So, when Mr. Blessinger comes and says, "I spent six hours here", everybody spent at least three days trying to come up with a sum of all the tickets for all the cars. They were under different drivers, they were under different plates, they were under different entities. It was a very long process that required at least four prosecutors and three staff members from village court. Hence, we finally come to an agreement. The agreement was after maybe two to three days of work in, in trying to work out an agreement to bring the parking subsidy down, which again, our village justice is not inclined to give a substantial reduction on parking tickets. That was a question. He has his standard, because we've been trying to negotiate a lump settlement so that he could be prepared and have a better package for the board today. And again, that is us doing a courtesy, you do not represent him. We still put together a package in order to assist him by at least reducing almost $7,000 in tickets. That's a lot of money. So, when we come to our sum for Mr. Blessinger to still make the, um, the argument that we can't afford it, he can't afford it, that's his decision. We made our representations to the, um, village court justice, Judge Alvarado, who listened to his situation, and Justice Court agreed to let him pay the court $500 a week. Our intention was always, the only reason why we agreed to, um, plead the fees down to the $10,000 because we thought we were going to get a lump sum. It wasn't until after we sat for three days calculating at least 45 pages of parking tickets, where we were told, "I can't afford to pay that either."
I made that very clear from day one.
Hold on, Mr. Blessinger, I did let you speak. So, now, why would we enter, and we should have just waited? He might as well have paid the $17,000. Why did we go through all that to say, "Okay, we're going to agree to stop the hearing after we did all that work"? That's just add up to the course of events, that just doesn't make any sense. Now, just because Justice Court has decided that he can get into a payment plan with Justice Court to collect his fees on behalf of the village, it's two different entities. Our position is still, this $10,000 payment that we agreed to was expected to be paid before the hearing today. As a matter of fact, he was told to try to take care of it two days before the hearing because that's the only one step of the process. Then it has to go to Police Officer Jackson, who has to do her part in clearing all of these cars to go back into service. This was, this was known for Mr. Blessinger now to come here to say, "I owe the representation". That you made a, you coming here making that representation means you understand that our position is that it still should be suspended. Otherwise, why would we have settled and deprived the village of $7,000? It just isn't making any sense. The $10,000 was contingent onto him, who was able to take care of all this hearing.
May I speak? From the get-go, and I would like to come back with my attorney, and he can testify this. From the first day that we came in here, it was made very clear that I would not have a lump sum to be paid. I made that from, from the get-go, from the first 20 minutes we had a conversation. And I came down here with my lawyer on four different occasions, okay? And I know it was just said, "Well, why did I go to Ms. Del Salvo?". Because I was told by village officials, that was the person I needed to deal with. So, that is who I dealt with, okay? I was called into a meeting in village hall in December of 2017. There was four or five people in the room, and I was told to deal with Ms. Del Salvo. So, that's what I attempted to do to no resolve, because I could not get a response from her. Okay? I'm asking for an adjournment to please come back with my attorney.
Well, he has already have an agreement for $500. Mr. Houston coming back with his attorney, we have to live with that. As long as he's paying it, no?
I do, yes.
No, I, I think we are beating a dead horse here.
He does not have the agreement. That is village court.
There was one agreement for you to pay a $10,000 lump sum, is that correct?
Never.
Never?
Nope.
Again, Mr. Blessinger is mischaracterizing the conversation that was happening. He came in to clear up his parking ticket. They came to the sum of between $15,000 to $17,000. The only reason why we entertained a lower amount was for it to be paid however he wants to call it, a lump sum or paying pieces over the, over the course of the weeks from the initial meeting to now. I don't know if the word lump sum is confusing him, but it was understood it had to be paid today or the hearing's going forward.
Legal counsel, I have, I have one more question for Mr. Blessinger. Very, a very simple question. He stood here and said that even though he know his license is suspended, if someone called him right now, he would send a car to 99 James J. Gone Away to pick the person up. What are we going to do about that?
Question?
That's, that's my question. So, we're going to agree for somebody to violate the law. That's what we agreeing to. It's not, it's not even monetary thing. We agreeing for somebody to have a business to operate, and he should not be operating. When he spoke to Justice Alvarado, then he tell Justice Alvarado, besides the money, the monetary part of it, that I was going to continue delivering services in Hempstead when I, when I was told that my license was suspended. And you just said more than once that you will, will continue to have people picked up in Hempstead, right or wrong?
I did say that, I said, "Yeah, trustee". And I even asked Justice Alvarado...
So, you're going to be arrogant enough...
No, I'm not arrogant.
No, no, let me finish. You're going to be arrogant enough to tell us that you're going to continue to violate the law?
I didn't say I was going to continue.
That's what you said, you said that...
I said, you asked, "Why what?", I didn't say...
You said, "If someone was called", you said, "If someone, someone called you right now and said, '99 James J. Gone Away', you would have, have a car dispatched, knowing that you don't have the proper paperwork, you don't have a license, you don't have a business license. And you want, you being a good guy that has nothing to do with it. It's laws, it's rules and regulations that everybody has to follow. So, well, one trustee may say you're a good guy that has absolutely nothing to do with this. And like I said before, we have a problem in Hempstead with people not adhering to the rules of the road. We have hit and runs, we have hit and runs with fatalities, we have people speeding in Hempstead. People have to follow the rules and regulations of, of the road. So, I don't know why you think we're just supposed to sit here and go along with it.
Trustee, I'm asking... Excuse me?
Could you close this meeting and we'll take action on the vote regarding this matter?
I'm asking for an adjournment to come back with my attorney, please.
We are dead, sir. Do I have a motion? I will close the conference room.
Second.
Who says second?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
That's just a close to me, right?
Trustee Rex Pro.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so, do you make the motion?
Did you get it?
The, the, yes, the making the decision?
Is that what?
Which is vote to close the hearing.
That's what we're closing the hearing.
Which is close the hearing.
So, now is the make the motion so that the hearing's...
Motion and...
Vote suspend, whatever they want.
At the recommendation of the council, you made a recommendation.
The recommendation was to continue the suspension until the village court, um, judgment's been made on the call.
But that's not good. She can't make a motion.
No, it's not an ocean, that's just a recommendation. You guys can do what you want.
I move to suspend the, uh, the medallions of all the outstanding taxis that have been operating in this village without a business license for the past 18 months.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Trustee Redford?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
According to the village code, now that the medallions have been suspended, all taxi, taxi Latino needs to turn in all the medallions as outlined in the hearing until the suspension has been lifted.
I don't have any current medallions.
On the vehicles.
There's no current medallions on the vehicles.
All the medallions, the expired ones, to turn them in. By encruring your possession, that's what I'm referring to. Pursuant to the village code.
Yes, yes.
All right, 6:38. Yes, thank you so much.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
If we could remain standing for a moment, please. He suffered a loss in the village family. Wendell Williams has passed away. He was a gentleman you would first meet when you entered the legal department, ever the gentleman. So, we can have a moment of silence at this time, I appreciate it, we all appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Now, as many of you, how to entertain any persons that have questions about adopted items, otherwise you can do it in the open mic at the end. But as many of you are aware, this will be the last regularly scheduled meeting that trustee Gary Pettis will attend. He first began serving here in 2002 as a trustee, and remained consecutively up until this date. He is, of course, still a trustee until the end of the month. And this there's a merge, that meeting, though this will be his last meeting. Accordingly, I'm going to ask Bishop Bully Watson, if you can kind enough to come up and say a few words on that issue. Thank you. Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and to the Hempstead community. I want, first of all, congratulate the winners of yesterday's election, Bishop Harv and Mr. Daniels. I am certainly thankful today to be able to say to trustee Pettis publicly that I thank you for your many years of service, because I know that you've done a lot for a lot of people, and I don't want you to ever think that we are not appreciative for your years of service and all that you've done. The Apostle Paul wrote a letter to the Saints at Rome. In the letter delivered by a deaconess named Phoebe, he says, "She has been a helper of many, and myself included". So, today, I want you to know that I'm appreciative, the community's appreciative. I know that there's some present challenges, but I still believe the word of God when it's there. Now, we know, all things work together for good to them that love the Lord, for those who are called according to his purpose. So, I said to you, my son, I'm grateful for you, and we'll be praying for you in your future, because we know the next chapter of heaven will be greater. May God bless you in your future, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your trustees, mutual at this time.
Thank you. I would like to mention at this time that the certification of the vote of the second yesterday will not be possible. It's now in the hands of the Board of Elections, and it has been challenged by two of the teams involved in the election process. Also, the only question that's been submitted thus far is an excellent question, but it's better prepared for the open mic. So, having said that, let's begin the meeting.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Redford?
Here.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that upon recommendation of the special prayers that occurred, the Board to CCRV is reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 5th, 2019, and accept those after you. and accept that after due.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Cramishes the report that Mayor Ryan, Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Rexbro have two missing vehicles, business license has been viewed. Justice Ford, report of the village justice for the month of February two thousand and nineteen, total number of cases before the court, one thousand seven hundred and fifteen. Total money permitted to village controller, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Copy of this report is filed in the village clerk's office and be reviewed by the public to announce its outcome. Result that upon recommendation of Deputy Superintendent Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby approve settlement of taxi order matter with a curador LLC for the property known as one fifty-one dash one fifty-seven Henry Street, Henson, New York, a total of thirty thousand dollars for the taxi years two thousand thirteen, fourteen through two thousand nineteen, twenty.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yeah.
Result that upon recommendation of Deputy Superintendent Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby approve settlement of taxi order matter with three hundred and seventy-seven euros that amount of your holding, LLC, for the property known as three hundred and seventy-seven euros that amount of your Henson, New York, a total of two thousand dollars for the taxi years two thousand nine, ten through two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Chief August, the Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby approve the settlement of taxi order matter or public storage in for the property known as eight seventeen, Vittisona Boulevard, Henson, New York, a total of eighty thousand dollars for the taxi years two thousand fourteen, fifteen through two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
Move. Second.
Who's second?
I did.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Chief August, the Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby approve the execution of railway use and running within the railway to install his utility facilities within the village of Hempstead.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Chief Vanderhold, Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby authorizes the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the West Hempstead Fire District, having its place of business at two ninety-five Hempstead Drive, West Hempstead, New York, to fuel fourteen of the fire department and police department vehicles at the gasoline pumps of Fire District while our pump station is redone.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Chief Vanderhold, Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby authorize the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the town of Hempstead, having its place of business at one Washington Street, Henson, New York, to fuel one hundred and fifty, one hundred and thirty-five village vehicles at the gasoline pumps by town of the town, maintain a grain field and boost up facilities of town of Hempstead while our pump station is redone.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Chief Vanderhold, Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby authorize the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the village of Garden City, having its place of business at three fifty-one St. Rabbit, Garden City, New York, to fuel ninety-two police department and fire department and lead passenger vehicles at the gasoline pumps of Garden City while our pump station is redone.
Move. Question?
Second. Second vote.
What's in place, do we know what's in place to safeguard the, the use of those pumps during that time period? Because in the village, on our pumps, we've got safeguards, right? So that anybody can't just chuck gas in the car and charge it to the village. And what, what are these other, are these other contracts? What, what do these other municipalities have that's similar to the village? What's to stop anybody from saying, filling up their pumps and saying, "It's on the village"?
Um, there is, um, a system set up in place that identifies our vehicles as being permitted on the property to pump, um, in terms of the details as to what, if it's gonna be an ID badge or some kind of pass that goes on, on the car, but they do have a, a mechanism in place where they can identify who is coming. Um, so like you said, that we are not charged for somebody else's use. We will have our own identification system that identifies which car is pumping how much gas at, at a time.
And, and just, second question would be, that's a pretty big bid. You know, how much gas, you know, given the number of cars that we've got rolling, whether it be DBW or Police Department, the additional thirty cents per gallon will add up pretty quickly. That's six dollars a tank. Six dollars a fill-up. Like, like this is gonna be for a number, how long is this project going to take in terms of until our pump comes back online? Okay. And how much fuel do we actually use on any given week? Right, this is gonna be, this is a big administrative cost of thirty cents per gallon. It's a huge markup.
Perhaps the, the question could be answered frankly, and I would give you a vote.
I, I, this is the first time here about a thirty cent extra charge that's something.
It's a city agreement, I gave a charge of thirty cents per gallon for administrative labor expenses. That's a huge markup for using a thousand gallons, and we're here to sue you for whatever. That's three hundred bucks, extra.
So, I didn't negotiate with you.
No, I'm not saying with you. I'm just asking a question.
I realize your alternative was perhaps more expensive. It was difficult for us to find places that would accept us and keep us flowing while our pump station is being redone. I'm not sure that there's an alternative that's viable.
One other, one other question, uh, when does the construction start for our pump station?
Hopefully within this month.
This month?
April, this, coming month, between April.
So, uh, can we get some kind of clarity on that thirty cents then?
I didn't negotiate it.
That must have been true.
I just set up a... I was in the A-10, you know, to reach out to get, to split the...
I, I take that behind us, Dr. Legal.
I mean, this is in all three, so maybe we should wait? I think we have some time. If, if you're gonna start in April, Frank, we, we have another meeting before that if we need to.
We have, uh, April one meeting.
Right, so, and this is an April seven meeting as well.
Just the one and you? So I, I wanted to take my second back.
Well, I just wanted to add for the record that the thirty cents was, um, to be negotiated by the legal department as it is kind of an exchange as when the time comes for one of these municipalities to come use our facilities, it's kind of a proposal, we'll be charging them the same. This is just the, the market going rate for when we want to go outside by, when we wanna go outside and ask another municipality to utilize their services, it would be the same if any one of them were coming into the village, we'd be charging the same thing. So we're going to, you know, negate this deal over the thirty cents, realizing that we would be foregoing the right to, to charge other municipalities for coming into the village at another time.
So that's like a service charge, isn't it?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify that for the board, if you still wanna pull until the next gentleman.
Oh, oh, I guess my question is, how much fuel do we use? Right, if we're using a lot of fuel, we're using a hundred thousand gallons of fuel, we're gonna pay these guys thirty grand just for being around, just for being available. I think that's really egregious. At some point in time, there needs to be some cooperation. So I, I just didn't need to relook at it based on how much fuel we actually use, like the estimated amount of fuel going back a certain period of time, and, and knowing how long we estimate this, all pumps are gonna be down. Right, I wouldn't wanna pay these three months, right, so three months, I mean, we could be paying these guys a hundred grand for just being neighborly.
The, in the document, it does claim thirty cents per gallon for administrative labor expenses. One would wonder if it should be thirty cents per pump, uh, per...
That seems a little high.
Doesn't seem high.
So, might I make a suggestion that we pull this and get back to this?
Well, we're gonna have to go, I think, just not only this one, but nine and ten.
Right, all of them.
Should we make a motion, you guys have to vote, you actually read it and go draw it, or you, you vote it down? Could you make a motion?
Make a motion on this one, the other two have.
You go in the back.
Oh, sorry.
You want to put this down?
Oh, she's gonna pull nine and ten, right? What is the process?
Well, we're gonna do this now.
Just vote it down, you guys made a motion, see how to vote it down.
We can vote this down.
After we vote this down, then she can go back to nine. But you could leave nine, you can leave the two that we already voted on, then we have another meeting before that, and hopefully we can rectify and just amend it, just in a way that's...
Exactly.
I should number eleven then.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. What are you, number ten? He hasn't voted down, he just voted, yes, so he gotta, tell him what he voted on, you know?
We're voting down item number eleven, and then we're gonna put it back on, either April second or April thirty.
Yeah, but that's number ten, you're calling the board on it.
No, do we like...
You're doing a lot.
Yes, the other two pass the way.
So what you're saying, what you're basically saying, no, to eleven.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear you call it so.
Can you read it again?
Sure, we'll read it again. Result that upon recommendation of Chief Vanderhold, Village Attorney, the board trustees hereby authorize the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the village of Garden City, having its place of business at three fifty-one St. Rabbit, Garden City, New York, to fuel ninety-two police department and fire department and lead passenger vehicles at the gasoline pumps of Garden City while our pump station is redone. So we got the motion, now we guys have to vote. Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Trustee Rexbro?
No.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
Uh, police department, result that upon recommendation of Chief Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, the board trustees hereby authorize the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with Nassau County, located at fifteen fifty, Franklin Avenue, Dennyville, New York, one one five zero one, which has allocated ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars from their resources to the Hempstead Police Department, Department, and the funds will be used for the implementation of police safety equipment.
Move. Second.
Who's second?
I did.
The funds will be used for the implementation of police safety equipment. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes, I'd like to note too that thanks to Nester County Legislature, she laid final to make this possible.
Result that upon recommendation of Joseph Simone, Superintendent, Village Department, the board trustees hereby authorize Saint Lyslaus Church to erect a pen under the Village Code, Section fifty dash twenty-eight, Paragraph A two, and hold their annual spring carnival in the church grounds from April twenty-sixth to May fifth, two thousand and nineteen, from four p.m. to ten p.m.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Rexbro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upon recommendation of Deputy Superintendent, supervisor of the board of party, Chief Number Ten, HDMV, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, Laurel Avenue Water Plant Installation of Airstrip Installments for well seven and nine, contact number one, air stripping tower equipment in the corporate of the village of Hempstead, be aware to the lowest responsible bidder, Lane Christmas and Company, eleven thirty-eight North Alma School Road, Street two zero seven, Mesa, Arizona, eight five two zero one, in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
So move.
I would like to mention that the grant is a sixty percent grant, and this is to the Environmental Facilities Corporation. We're responsible as a village for forty percent, which would make this a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar obligation on our part.
Correct.
Is, is, in this, in this, uh, in this bid, are they, is there a bonding, a completion bond or anything associated with this? Because their, their pricing is significantly lower than the next bid. I, I wouldn't wanna get into a situation where halfway down the road, all of a sudden the change, all of a sudden the cost will move.
We use this company before?
Yeah, the company actually goes back to eighteen eighty-two and is considered to be, uh, highly recognized in, in the industry, and it's the oldest, uh, hopefully, well-satisfied. But indeed, it is three forty-five, and the next price is four thirty-nine.
So it's almost a hundred thousand dollars less, the average is close to five hundred thousand, and these guys are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the average. So my question is just, is there a completion bond in place associated with this work? So if they disappear, we at least can get the job done at the price that we said we're quoting here.
Just to read their response in the letter. It says their ability to do thousands of airstripping installations annually, given them the economy scale, that they will have to bid more competitively than the other vendors.
That's not the other vendors, that's, that's, that's for the average lot, that's for our person, that's not the...
Right, but I'm suggesting that that's the explanation that was off when that question was asked.
I'd be more comfortable if they had a completion bond so that we know they don't get halfway through and all of a sudden realize the cost is going to be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars like everybody else bid. I mean, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the average person. I, 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 economy scale is one thing, but that seems a little off to me. Is there, the question is, is there a completion bond? Are they going to give us a completion bond?
Can we make that part of the review?
Yes.
Fine, yeah. Uh, I, I know our expert in water, Holzmodel, has commented that, uh, this company has successfully completed similar natures and costs and adequately staffed to meet the construction schedule. Ralph, could you add anything to this competition?
As far as the identity of Lane Well Drilling? They're a global company. They, they are, Lane also used to be Hydro Group, and they've done hundreds of these silos. We're talking about the silo like we have at Clinton Avenue. That's what we're putting in down Laurel Avenue for free on remediation. Um, I guess maybe the big feather in their hat was that they were the guys that bailed out the Chilean, maybe Chilean mine, uh, miners that were trapped. They designed, they made that missile, that was Lane Company. So if they're not a mom and pop deal, they're, I think they're global, I don't know for sure, but I, I will put my recommendation on it also, besides Holzmodel and Mr. Taylor.
Okay. They could be the greatest people in the world, I just, if they're that great and they're gonna finish it at this price, then don't put their money where their mouth is, tell them, "Give us a completion bond."
I don't know this contract, but don't they have to put a performance bond and everything else up?
I, I, only thing, only thing we have furnished with, only thing we've been furnished with is, is a letter saying that.
I guess it'd be a question for Legal, they have to put up a performance bond. And then after that, the job's completed, they put up a maintenance bond. So if anything does go wrong within a year, you have recourse to go after that money.
But have they done that at this point, do they find and provide that for Legal? To you, I cannot affirm or deny that they did that. Yes, part of the process is they have to put up a bond.
Oh, so if they don't put up the bond, they don't get the... Oh, so if they don't put up the bond, they don't get the bid?
Legal is saying that part of the process, they have to put up the bond otherwise it's gonna fall.
How much?
Thank you.
Because of the fact that it's not included, and if you wanna address it, clarify that before you make a motion on it, and I think that you should.
So I suggest that we, can we write it to you?
Yes.
If you were looking to approve, you can go through the conditions.
Oh, definitely.
That's fair enough, yeah.
The conditions, those conditions, there's a change on the completion bond in place by, you can give it a date.
The suggestion is that we approve it, based on the fact that that condition of the bond being present. We believe it's necessary, and start with the stuff, but we don't see it in the writing.
And might I suggest that we do it for all of them?
No, let's pretend motion means second.
That's a motion.
We did.
We had our question.
We both to vote.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
I'm confused over here, as is?
No.
No, with, with approval conditions.
Yes.
Trustee, Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
So, Madam Clerk, I suggest that we do it, same for...
For the other two, yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
Approval conditions, yes. We saw that, per recommendation, Larry Lux, purchasing agent, Mike Taylor, supervisor of the water department, the bid number eleven, H E M D, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, Laurel Avenue Water Plant Installation of Air Striking Treatments for well seven and nine, contract number two, general construction and mechanical work in the corporate village of Hempstead, be aware to the lowest bidder, basing contracting in six fifty, New York, also here, one one seven four two, in the amount of one million four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, four hundred dollars, approved with conditions.
Again, the sixty percent grant, so the villagers' responsibility is reduced to one point four to five hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Larry Lux, purchasing agent, Mike Taylor, President of the Water Department, the bid number twelve, H E M D, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, Laurel Avenue Water Plant Installation of Air Striking Treatments for well seventy-nine, contract number three, electrical work in the corporate village of Hempstead, be aware to the lowest responsible bidder, an electrical contractor, seventy-five wheel drive, sweet one, Bohemia, New York, one one seven one six, in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, approved with conditions.
And that's reduced to one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred on the bill.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, item seventeen is full, so we move into item eighteen. We saw, per recommendation, Stacy Harbitt, village assessor, the board trustees here by approves the two thousand and nineteen twenty assessment of finalization, with recommendations and or adjustments, if any, as made by Sessom Harbitt. The two thousand and nineteen twenty assessment will cover for you and as of April first, two thousand and nineteen, subsequent to the grievance hearing which was held on February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Bernie Holger, superintendent, tax and water department, the board trustees here by authorizes the village to pay the empire, May three fifty LLC, interest to March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Property went to two thousand and eighteen, tax may still, erroneously due to payment was applied to sixty Grand Street, Hempstead Meter, instead of two thousand and nineteen, Washington Street, Hempstead.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw, per recommendation, Grace Lawrence, active village treasurer, that the board trustees here by authorizes pursuant to section five dash five zero eight of village law, that on Monday, April eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at six P M., public hearing shall be held, Village Hall, ninety-nine James Garner Way, in New York, one one five five zero, under tentative budget for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, yes, amended to have twenty twenty, twenty-one, this two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Grace Lawrence, active village treasurer, that the board trustees here by authorizes pursuant to section five dash five zero eight, village law, that on Monday, April eighth, two thousand and nineteen, immediately following the hands of the budget public hearing, there will be the new waterway scheduling instruction hearing, to be considered to become effective on this first, two thousand and nineteen, for the corporate village of Hempstead.
All right, question? We'll go on both.
Need to vote.
Yes.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
It's a question, when will these, both the budgets be available for view?
Grace?
Should be up at least two business days before the hearing, one to do some things.
Two days, two business days prior to the hearing.
Any other questions?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Lisa Barrington, director of human resources, that the board trustees here by approves the appointment of a position within the corporate village of Hempstead, Judy Guzman, ninety-nine James Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, title change only, accounting, accounting clerk, grade five four new, fifty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars, the fifth of March, eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Lisa Barrington, director of human resources, that the board trustees here by approves the appointment of a position within the corporate village of Hempstead, George Alford, ninety-nine James Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, new hire, water cannon, water near service training, with a one five zero new, salary fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-one, of civil service approval.
So move.
Who move, I'm sorry?
I'll second.
I'll move it, we take this to executive session, to discuss personnel matter.
Can you do that?
Yes.
All the remaining personnel? I have a question before we go into exec.
Let me take the, the motion, please. Okay, who's second to go into executive session to disclose personal matters?
Um... Mayor Ryan?
No, that was the vote for the, for the appointment, now we're voting to go into an executive session, so Trustee Daniels, move. Now would be the second to go into an executive session.
I'll second.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All personnel, yeah?
Yes.
Remaining ones?
I have twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Yes.
Bishop Watson, just in case you're not here when we come back out, I wanna thank you for your kind words.
So move.
And a second.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Twenty-five, we saw that, per recommendation, Lisa Barrington, director of human resources, that the board trustees here by approves the appointment of a position within the corporate village of Hempstead, Anthony Menonson, ninety-nine James Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, new hire, public works, build maintenance, labor, grade one four zero new, with a salary of fifty thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, of civil service approval.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Lisa Barrington, director of human resources, that the board trustees here by approves the appointment of a position within the corporate village of Hempstead, Peter Miller, ninety-nine James Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, title of grade change, fire alarm, firehouse maintainer, grade one nine, one new, with a salary of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty, of civil service approval.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Twenty-seven, we saw that, per recommendation, Lisa Barrington, director of human resources, that the board trustees here by approves the appointment of a position within the corporate village of Hempstead, Marty Devada, ninety-nine James Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, title of grade change, build maintenance, maintainer, grade one one one, six new, with a salary of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, of civil service approval.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that, per recommendation, Grace Lawrence, active village treasurer, owning the bills ordered by the board trustees, which were renewed in March twenty, two thousand and nineteen, been approved as previously reviewed.
So move.
I'll second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro? Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I will now move into the open debate. Ammar Khalid.
Hi, my name is Ammar Khalid. I'm a resident of the Revoli Building, I'm a resident of the Revoli Building located on the corner of Main Street and West Columbia. I'm here actually supporting my building, and just had some questions, I understand that the building has a pilot program, as part of that pilot program, they receive certain tax breaks. Some of the things that they should be doing in return for that pilot program is not being done. So I'm kinda concerned about things like the security of the building. What I understand is, in return for having a pilot program, you should be hiring people or companies that are local. And so, we actually don't have any security in the building. As a result of that, my daughter is considered back here, stand up, gentlemen. My daughter almost got shot last year because a bullet came through the window in the front door, just as she got in the elevator. Another young man got shot in the back of our building just recently, and died, two deaths, actually. There's people that actually sleep in our building, they sleep in the basement, they sleep in the hallways by the mailboxes. And then we had issues with the parking lot, from what I understand, the, the building owners received some money for the parking lot from the town. They just did the parking lot, and we now have potholes in the parking lot. We have numbers, the numbers in the lines are actually starting to fade already, I don't know if they did it correctly, but, you know, these are also issues. And then also, the building owners are now starting to work on putting a homeless shelter, where the daycare used to be. So that's, that's a concern, and then when some of our tenants actually reach out to people here in town hall, or here in the village, they're being told we know nothing about it. My other concern is the fact that they're getting these tax breaks, and I'm in the process of trying to buy my first home, and I was looking here in Hempstead for a while, but almost every house that I found out here, taxes of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, it was ridiculous. So I think something should be done about this, and I think this should be addressed.
Okay, thank you, I know myself, I'm sure the other trustees, well, this is the Rivley, we've heard the concern particularly lately, and I didn't talk to Dan Goldstein today, he's the owner of the building, the new owner of the building. The community room has been closed down, that's true, and there's a possibility it'll be reopened after the cameras are put in place. There'll be seventy cameras, what is finally finished, I think there are fifty-five now, but you are correct, there is no physical security presence, there's no full cameras. Now, in terms of the apartments, which I've heard the same complaint, that it's gonna be a homeless shelter, he said that is not true, that it's one of those rumors that gets legs and just keeps moving, he says he's converted it into nine extra apartments, and Mike Cerrito was the attorney, he's gonna go before, Mike Cerrito's attorney's gonna go before the zoning board to get permission to do that. These are the answers that he gave.
I myself was told by the owner of the building, or his sons, or whoever, the young men are who are taking care of the building, that they were opening a shelter there, for girls.
I told him, I've heard that consistently, and he appreciated the fact that I called that directly, and he assured me that there will be apartments, not a shelter, there'll be nine extra apartments, this is his answer, it will go before the zoning board. So if you have an opportunity to tell that, maybe there's a need to present that to the zoning board.
And then also, they regarding that, I'm sorry?
Isn't the doors locked, he said the doors are locked, they have to be, how is people sleeping in there if the doors are locked?
Because they, they pull the door real hard, and it opens.
So it don't lock.
And then they also get in through people by, like, if I come in the building myself, then there's somebody standing there, they'll grab the door before it gets a chance to close, so they're getting in through the tenants as well.
That's it. So you need security.
Right, so we, we do need physical security there, and if actually closed up the window where the security booth was, it's now all wall, so if we did have security, the security couldn't actually see out into the lobby area.
Matt, do you have a date for the zoning board here?
I probably have that day, that's a fair question, if you could...
I have it, I'm asking.
It's the first Thursday of every month.
The first Thursday.
For the Rivley, is it documented already on the zoning board?
You have to ask Richard.
We saw April fourth.
Richard, you're right.
April fourth was the case.
Richard Robinson is the one who tells us when it's on the calendar, we don't know if it is, if it's out, because we spoke to him today, it can't be this information. But if you wanna call him through the toll, at four eight nine three four hundred, ask for Richard Robinson, he'll tell them whether it's on.
May I just say something, if you call tomorrow, you stop tomorrow, you can call, and call that extension two oh two, I'll try to get that information to you, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate you putting it there. Is Robert here? Big Bobby for Robert Sevien?
Thank you.
Renee Holmes, please.
Who's running the block?
I am. I won't go over.
No, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about my job.
Oh, okay. Hello, Mayor Ryan, and trustees.
Talking to the mic.
Thank you, I have two questions, well, one con, two comments. The first concerns not so much elections as campaigning. When I was going to work last week, somebody handed me a card about someone running for the trustees, and it did not have any, it just had pictures and their names and their, what they have as experience. And they said, well, you know, we don't put on these, the person's political affiliation, because everyone runs as independent. And when I came home from work, on my car, and then at my house, lots more of these things were around, and they did say what people, what party they were affiliated with, and my concern is this, when you start, we, there needs to be somebody who's in charge, or whatever, or a board or something, besides the board of electors, and he's someone local, that looks at this, because when people put on their party affiliation, sometimes it signals messages to people, and they may intend for that to be it, but the bottom line is it needs to be consistent with everyone. I should not know, if it's supposed to be, everyone runs as an independent, then no one should have any party listed. And it was way too many examples of that for me to just not mention that this needed. Okay, that's just my comment about that, I think that does need to be clear, it needs to be consistent for everyone, evil, and not evil, even playing field. My other con- My other comment is, I think there should be consideration to adding a part, like an extra maybe five minutes, I know you're going to love this, to the meeting, so that you can do follow-up on items that people bring up at other meetings. And the perfect example was what the young man just said about that apartment building, because that's the one where the property manager came in here several months ago and said they were definitely hiring a security person. And they have never hired it. There's never been a follow-up, as far as I know of, at one of these meetings where we get it in writing, because based on my training, writing is what I go by. So if it's in writing, I know it's there. It's memorialized. And it needs to be available for, I think, everyone to see. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything. But I do think things should be, there should be at least maybe five to ten minutes, maybe for some follow-up. That's why I wrote the word "follow-up." It made no sense when I said that, but I do think there should be a little part for that. And a follow-up will be provided by the trustee for mayor, or whatever department was supposed to do it. And if that makes sense, if you understand, I mean, I think it's pretty clear what I'm saying. And my final comment quickly is regarding the putting the budget on, out for everyone to see online, I don't think two business days is adequate. This is a large village, as it is, people don't realize how important it is to get out and vote for the trustees and the mayor. I think it needs to be at least one calendar week before the meetings.
Okay, as regards your first comment, people are permitted to use the line, even if it's a line of a, maybe a party. If that party grants them that permission.
Okay.
Otherwise, it had hot titles.
Okay.
Now, the follow-ups are, I mentioned, for example, the person that turns to this and is following to the program to respond as to the issue that was presented before the board. So there are follow-ups.
Oh, I never said there weren't any follow-ups. I didn't mean to say that.
Okay.
But I've never seen the follow-ups presented to the people at the meeting or in writing anywhere. Like when I asked about the part, about where I live, how people are just stopping in the street to let people, to wait for someone to open the gates. And I know you probably, you did probably follow up on that. I'm not even saying you didn't, but I won't know if I don't get a response or it's not right. Not just for me, but for the people at the meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
If it's brought up at a meeting, I think it's fair to tell everyone in the meeting.
Good point, thank you.
Okay, and the other one was pretty clear, the third thing, right? About, no, that's it, that's it. This was my...
Thank you. Reginald Lucas?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees.
Good evening, Mayor.
And congratulations to Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I remember that one time we were supposed to be having a fire chief here. He was a report monthly. Is that still in part of the program or did it stop altogether?
I have gone to the warning. Well, go ahead, finish your question.
Okay. There have been several shootings in the last month, where people have died and so forth. What's the, what's happening about that? Are they putting more police in the area that is happening in, or that they just, as a regular day thing? Other crimes in the village, I understand that on terrace yesterday, there was a police chase where the cops got out of the car and chased somebody. I'd like to know what happened with that. When the police, you know, tamper with the car that they're in, or, you know, do something to the car that's criminal, like make the car, you know, not operative or something like that, what happens to the person when they'll find out who did it? Do they get the, any type of re-reprimand or anything like that? How many officers have been reprimanded?
I don't understand.
This year? I'd like to know if there are lists for the street repair. And if there is, you know, well, we see the list for the street repair. That's it.
Well, let's go down the list. The fire chief, that is still in place, except I have come to the point of fire chief or a fire representative, and please give me something to write it as well. Obviously, one of the items we lifted today, not so obviously as you would know we lifted it, had to do with the fact that we needed backup material from the present fire person here to explain. As to the shootings, we are aware of the situation. Obviously, we need as much help as we can get in Nassau County. A lot of thanks to Sheila Bino in this area. She called two meetings that I attended with the deputy mayor. Only two of us were on to attend, with Patrick Ryder and Nassau County, well, I guess she was. Both of us have won, and our chief, of course. And they are offering money and manpower. They're going to help us in terms of improving the cameras.
Yes.
The opportunity to have licensed readers. And there's some other things that they're going to do, which are best left unannounced, which will help us in fighting, getting guns off the street, picking up people who have outstanding warrants and things of that nature. But there is definitely an effort, and there is cooperation in Nassau County. Chief, could you respond to the terrorists?
Yes, the officers saw somebody had a mask on, and I believe they had a drug sale on him, and he took off running when the officers got out the car. And they did catch him, and he had a warrant, and he had some marijuana on him.
So now you said marijuana, are we prosecuting marijuana, or we just...
That's no longer that important, and will at some point, but it's been withdrawn by the state.
What is that, the list for the street repairs? Is that established here?
Yes, Frank, in the back, it has a list of the street repairs. And they're classified according to the date, or at least the year that they anticipate getting to that.
Okay, so would the list be the same as it was last year, or would it change up?
Well, hopefully it changes as we do streets. As we all know, it's expensive, it's about a million dollars a mile. But the fact of the matter is, there are many streets that need repair, we're aware of that. People do pull, this is people pull out the examples, you know, they do. Sometimes it's a temporary solution, more importantly, of course, would be if they get the street paid. But there's limited numbers that we can do each year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alan Yuson?
Good evening, Mayor Ryan, trustees, creditors. Okay, mine is sort of, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
You know, I have this thing on quality advice. We have a lot of noise going on with the taxi cab companies. They're coming two, three, four o'clock in the morning blowing your horn. People should be ready to go out the door. I'm going to call for a taxi, I'm ready, okay? But they sit out there blowing your horn, and they're not only calling for the people in the house, they're disturbing for blocks around. And I think at one time before, the last administration, we spoke to all the car companies about blowing their horns. They don't have to, they got cell phones, they call into the house, they know the numbers to call them. Also, speed limits. Speed limits should be lowered. Speed limits, what is it, thirty, thirty-five miles an hour? If you tell somebody thirty miles an hour, they're going to go forty. Tell them thirty-five, they're going to go forty-five. So it should be lowered to twenty-five miles an hour. Stop signs, no one will lay stop signs. Okay, we need patrol cars from time to time to sit at corners, you know, if they're available. I understand, you know, you have a lot of other things to do. And to catch these guys. Construction. Construction is being done at Ingram Boulevard, Leverett Street, and Crowell Street. Are they going to repave those roads? We remember about ten, eight to ten years ago, we had Leverett Street repaved, the whole thing, with the aprons and everything. They hadn't tore that all back up, it's just a mess. Crowell Street, about four years ago, we had that repaved. We tore it all up again. So when these guys scare the streets up, shouldn't there be something put in place that they have to repave, not just to repave that little spot with that they tore up where they come to fight back? Repave the whole street, why not? There was something I stopped off at the planning board one day. And are we going to put that weight station back over there that we had had a problem with? As you know of?
Transport station.
Yeah, because they were talking about that, and somehow they all said, yes, 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 down the line, to have. So I says, nobody else heard it. So what's going on with that? Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Rest of the horn blowing, if you get the taxi number, so, share it with us. It is a violation. And cooperation from residents would help in that. You have a perfect solution, add the phone number, just call, rather than wait until the neighborhood. Speed limit situation is something that we're allowed to do on the village streets. And our speed limit now is lowered to twenty-five, is your suggestion? But the theory is they're going to go thirty-five. This is a...
I know that's a...
The streets you mentioned before, both Leverett, Crowell, Ingram, they will be repaid by the company that was doing it. Do we agree back there, Frank?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Just if you want to know, it was actually a long fight to get that done. And actually, the gentleman that helped get that started is actually in the school. It's Michael Abrams. It's a long time that we tried to get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Franky, thank you.
And it didn't happen until this year. It's been a long battle to get it done.
And regards to the transportation of Sewell, attorney will respond.
The applicant was denied for a number of reasons, and then they reapplied. And they have gone before zoning, and they met all of the criteria that the community had asked for in order for it to be a compromise, and the board has reserved its decision. They made a lot of improvements. It's not the monstrosity that it was before. There are certain types of ways that are not permissible any longer. Noise factor we're taking in, a lot of big community concerns. And most importantly, is an obligation to hire Hempstead residents bringing that income into the community, was something that was given a lot of weight. So the decision is still on reserve.
So on the other, because I thought, you know, you had to bring the community and open it up like we did before.
It's still a public hearing. They did have, it was here, it was here.
When did they have that?
Oh, I don't know the date, sir, but it was here, the public was here, voicing their concerns. There was an ongoing...
I know we had a big one over there at Kennedy Park, apparently.
Well, originally, it was moved to Kennedy Park because we couldn't house the amount of people.
Correct.
But this second application, the courtroom was still full, but we had the ability to have it there, wasn't as packed. But it was still full.
No one knew about it. No one, not with the Association. And I don't think the county council even knew about it either. Who knew about it?
It's on the website, all of the zoning meetings are on the, and the agenda is on the village website, as it always is. There isn't extra advertisement, everything goes on the website.
And I wanted to know, I was in your area today, they have unmarked, they had an unmarked car watching the stop signs and everything in your area today.
And the horns, as I said, you know, you say, well, we need help from the community. I mean, two or three o'clock in the morning, you're not going to run out there and look at, see a license plate of a car. I know it's tough, it was all island, all these different cars, you know, by the, the colors, the cars, okay? But I'm asking you to call the companies and tell them to tell their drivers not to blow their horns. Okay? When they come?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Governor Garrett?
This statement is on behalf of the committee to say Hempstead has to do with the next developer agreement. This is the next developer agreement that staff would pages. And the implementation of it, as indicated, and the reading of it, was vague and open-ended, that gives power to the developer to do just about anything. And it also calls for basically the tandem of the entire community and the replacement with luxury apartments. This is an evil document. It's evil because it was adopted by evil means. The evil means included seven years of secrecy, collusion, lies, deception, misinformation, and finally, the corrupt rigging of the appraisals and the appraisal process itself. While there is a lawsuit that we await a decision on the appraisals and the rigging of the appraisals. However, we don't know which way the court is going to go, because the courts, while they claim to be impartial, are known to be quite political. The rigging of the appraisals was done for the purpose of stealing not only thirty-five million dollars worth of village parking lots, but for the future debt of an additional twenty million dollars worth of village, of the facilities. The future debt will include the village hall, the library, the police department, the building department, the assessors office, two firehouses, Denton Green, and a children's playground. All of these properties are to be appraised under the same appraisal apparatus that was used to steal the parking lots. And this evil process is being implemented for an evil purpose. The evil purpose is the manipulation and the manipulated displacement of ten thousands of Hempstead residents on all income levels, including homeowners and tenants alike. This evil document cannot be allowed to stand. It must be aggregated. It must be terminated. It must be torn up.
I agree.
It must be destroyed. It must be destroyed before it destroys the whole community.
That's true.
Wonderful Hempstead to live. This document must be thrown to the curb and under the bus. The people of this community need to face reality. Please, understand how dangerous this is to the community, and there certainly needs to be prayer that God will protect the people of Hempstead and not allow this to happen.
Thank you, Governor.